We do.
Okay. I call this meeting of the North Woodby Park and Recreation District Board to order. It is 6:38 PM on the 19th of December. And we have forum, Commissioner Holly, Commissioner Hofmeyer, and Commissioner Frosch are in attendance. First order of business, we have to get Commissioner Frosch sworn back in, since he was not a legal member the last time. Because you have to be a registered voter in this district to be legal. So we are going to swear you back in and sign your oath.
If you don't vote in four years, then your registration will be...
You get deregistered.
De-registered, so I do not know.
Whoa, I didn't know that either.
Okay, so we are going to stand up, the two of us. You're witnessing. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Michael Frosch.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the State of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and Washington.
That I am legally qualified...
That I am legally qualified...
...to assume the office...
To assume the office.
...of North Woodby Park and Recreation District...
Of North Woodby Park and Recreation District.
Commissioner Two.
Commissioner Two.
Then I will support the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution and the State...
And laws.
And laws of Washington.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge...
...the duties of this office...
The duties of this office.
...to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Awesome. All right. So you sign here, we will sign up here and I'll sign down there. Okay, agenda changes. I am going to make a change down to new business where it says women's locker room showers. We're going to talk about all the locker room showers, because apparently the men's have some issues too. And also, I wanted to add to the 2017 budget discussion, we're going to talk about healthcare as well. We have some data on that. Does anyone else have agenda changes they wish to enter?
I don't have the minutes for the August 25th or November 28th.
Oh, yeah, we have no minutes, so in fact, we won't... Approval of minutes is deleted for tonight. Did you have any changes coming up?
I did not have any changes. You said the women's locker room, just locker room, and then add it as health care.
Yeah, so we're going to delete women's, so make it locker room showers, and then add... Oh, healthcare to the 2017 budget discussion.
The unfinished business.
In unfinished business. Oh, and one more, and I forgot. We were going to talk about the new minimum wage impact tonight, but because Kaz is not here, he's definitely ill, we are going to postpone that to January.
Right there.
So just delete it, or wind it through. All right. I saw some people signing up for public comments.
So...
Yes?
The 2017 budget overtime rule, we should probably strict that to them, on unfinished business?
No, that because that was my discussion topic.
Was it? Okay, cool, I didn't know if we could do that without having to...
No, I have as much... I brought it to his attention and I wanted to talk about it, so I just thought we should talk about it. Yes, we don't have everybody here, but...
We've got to talk about a Texas judge here, I mean, who would have thought?
I know. All right, so now we're up to public comments, so... Anil?
Anil.
Tyson? Say it again.
Anil.
Very nice, I've never seen that name. Mr. Tyson?
Hi, how's it going?
Oh, let me preface this. Everyone has three minutes. It is a... The public express their opinions to the board. It is a one-way, it's not a conversation give and take, we're not going to answer questions. You guys just tell us for three minutes your concerns, and we're happy to listen to them. Okay?
Okay.
And expect that it will be addressed, so stay tuned and come back to the next meeting, and that might be where we're able to have it on the agenda and have some action on it.
Okay. Well, my concern is budget as it pertains to the swim team, whether it's in WAC or the swim team. Seems like that area of the budget gets more scrutiny than the rest of the budget. And I'm trying to understand or figure out, or wanting the same rules applied across the board, not just to one program or one area of the budget. I think it's, as somebody who does have a child that's on the swim team and a taxpayer, have been for a while, I have great concern as to how the monies are used and allocated, and how fair a budget is done across the board. And I would like to see how the same rules are used across the board in the budget, because I don't see that right now. I see a lot of scrutiny with just the INWAC. And while I'm a good participant in making sure we budget fairly and make sure things are accountable, where money's going, I want to make sure that there's not one program that's getting treated more fairly than the rest, and that the same rules apply.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Parps?
Parps.
Okay, Ms. Parps.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to hand each of you a copy of a letter, and it has 31 signatures pertaining to pretty much the ladies' showers, but I understand the men's showers are not as bad as the ladies' shower. We've been making complaints to Steve for several months now, trying to get something done with the showers. Out of nine showers, I believe we have three that work, and the maximum length of time is like six seconds on any of the showers. And we're wondering, you know, number one, why haven't they been fixed? And we're concerned, because he doesn't take us seriously at all when we do complain. In fact, he was somewhat trying to discourage us from coming to this meeting. But obviously, the five of us for sure are here representing the showers. And we'd like to know, you know, how much longer do we have to wait to be able to get a decent shower? There's huge concerns, because you can't leave that chlorine on you all day long. And there's probably four of us that come all the way from Coopville, so when we get out of the pool and get a less than six-second shower, we have to go home and take another shower, just to get the chlorine off. And some people are extremely sensitive to the chlorine, so it is obviously a health issue for a lot of people that do come to the pool. And we would like for the board, which by the way, thank you very much for serving on this board, it's really important that somebody does, but we're also hoping that somebody takes us seriously, because we're really getting tired of complaining and not getting anywhere. And that's, I think that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Milkie?
Yes. Good evening. I work, I'm looking at the pool as an essential property for the community, and therefore, in my view, it needs to be maintained, so it can be in constant use. I have a suggestion I pointed out to Steve. I took care of all the boilers and the plumbing for Oak Harbor School District. And naturally, I had about 17 different kinds of faucets, 11 different kinds of pumps. And my suggestion to him was, perhaps he could contact the school district maintenance department, find out what kind of pumps, pumps part, pair of parts they have. And something breaks down here, they get a loner until the proper part was ordered on... So you don't have to shut down for a week. I checked with maintenance and so far, no contacts have been made. But they, I know from personal experience, they have a pretty good supply of spare parts, impellers and gaskets and all these other things, couplers. So to me, you get the two agencies of the community working together, they could help each other. You get the order of part, it comes in, it goes back to the school district. The men's shower room is a problem too. I've been involved with a lot of things over my life, and I see holes through the wall and not capped. Water gets in there, bacteria grows. So you've got safety open, myself and other people. But looking into, try to coordinate with the Oak Harbor School District Maintenance Department, maybe a way to keep things from... That last time, we shut down for a week, that's, you know, that's a killer for your income, and it really ticks off the community. Why aren't things being maintained better? That's all I guess.
Thank you. Is that a Ms. O'Connor? Chris O'Connor?
I'm here about the showers as well, and I just sort of echo what Carol said about the showers, and about us not being taken seriously when we talk about it, and we're spoken back to very condescendingly. And I think that's not the main issue of, you know, personalities. The issue is that we don't have showers that work. You can't even soap up and push the button and turn around to get the soap off your back before the shower stops. So, you know, that's a health issue, I think. So we really would appreciate someone paying attention to it. He mentioned he had some, you know, Parps kids or something on order, but they're only 10-second shower timers. That's what he told us. So it's not really a lot, but I guess 10 seconds is better than four, or six, or one, or two. But really, just really appreciate me being taken seriously, and somebody paying attention to what we're saying, because it really is important. We're the paying customers, we're all members. Thank you for your time, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
She just said something about the sec, and I'm here about the showers also. Steve had said something about they were preset. They could be five, seven, or 10 seconds. Set the timing on it, and I'm not quite understanding why that, just those times, I don't know if you have ever taken a 10-second shower or not before, but it's really not enough time to get the soap out of your hair, and I've got short hair. What I'm seeing in there is frustration on the part of the ladies, where they're starting to slam those. So even if they're set for a little while, I mean, they're getting so frustrated, they're just... They're walking on, because you're just trying to get it to go. So I think they're probably doing more harm out of frustration. Maybe they're breaking them, because they won't stay on longer than, well, we timed it, the longest one was six seconds. 10 seconds is, would be better. It used to be, you could go in there and have at least a minute shower, and actually get out. And there was two showers that was last year, two showers that stayed on for maybe, probably 30 seconds, girls, would you say? And we took turns using the two. And now those two no longer work, and we're down to six seconds. So I don't, I don't know... He just seemed to say that they were going to only go down 10, 5, or 5, 7, or 10 seconds worth. I don't know if that's a true statement or not, but that was, is what he told us when we were talking to him about it. Oh, and then when we did complain to him, he said we could, well, we could go out and use the shower outside here. Isn't that hot water? Yeah, it's cold water that's coming out of there. I mean, we're trying to take showers, guys. Sure they wouldn't appreciate us stripping out there, and... You wouldn't want to see that.
This is a family-friendly...
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so is that, are you done?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, hi. My concern is the reputation of the INWAC, the swim team, and the coach, and the chance to succeed that I'm hoping the kids will get, that are joining this team now and starting to become a really cohesive, great competitive unit that is representing this district very successfully. I believe that we have currently onboard the most successful swim team, competitive age group swim team that we've had in this area in at least 10 years, and perhaps ever, and that's judging from my personal review of historic INWAC team top times that have been recorded here since at least mid-'90s, maybe before that, maybe those are just the oldest ones that still exist on record from the mid-'90s that I saw. We have had in the last 12 months four top number-one best swimmer in an event in the whole Pacific Northwest region, which is all the western Washington. It's called Pacific Northwest Swimming, is the name of the club, or the group of clubs, that represent from Canadian border to, who's a little bit, Oregon, west of the Cascades. And we have, I don't believe that's ever been done before. As far as I know, it's never happened from this small club before. We've had four champions on the team. One has since moved away, the other three have just earned Coach Strykes' honor of the last... The most current season are, you'll see it all there for those in a newspaper article coming up. They were just taken today, the photos were just taken right here today. And of those three, one of them has three top times, one of them has two top times, and the other one has just one. Just one being something that's remarkable, because it doesn't usually happen in an average year around here. Hasn't happened before this year, since I've been involved with the team over the last three to four, three and a half years, I think. There's also been top historical club times. These are the kids who are doing the best in a particular event that INWAC Swimmers have ever done. Not necessarily champions in the Pacific Northwest region, but we keep track of the top 16 times that have been swum by swimmers on this team historically, and that's where I gather this data. And I don't believe there's ever been a year, possibly, I could be wrong, I haven't done a full data analysis. The '07, '08, we had some really fantastic swimmers, young age group swimmers. Two or three of whom are currently on the high school team here in Oak Harbor right now, and doing very well. And they were outstanding, amazing swimmers back in the '07, '08 era when they were on the team. But I don't think we've ever had the breadth of talent that we have now, because we have kids from both genders, between the ages of eight and 16, who have hit...
That's your time, take 10 more seconds to...
All right. I want to mention that that talent has been developed by the coach who we've had onboard for less than two years. I think he's been onboard for about 23 months. And he has also grown the teams, first time I've known him since, well, three and a half years I've been to them, we hit the 50 number of members on the swim team. So he has grown the team and really developed the talent, and he deserves credit for that.
All right, thank you. Okay, next agenda item, board issues. Mr. Hofmeyer?
None.
Mr. Frosch?
None.
Okay, I don't have anything either, other than... You absolutely can. I was, what I was going to ask the other board members, if they want to move up the discussion of the locker room showers, so that you could hear that, and then you could leave, having heard it.
Okay.
I mean, do you guys mind?
No, absolutely, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Is it possible to add a word, I didn't sign up for?
Yes, your name.
I just wanted to say that we are people that love the pool. I love the pool, I think it's great. And, you know, I've been here for probably about 10 years, and our attendance is dwindling because of all of the issues that have been mentioned. But I just want to say how much we love being here and being part of the pool.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, did you guys get the email? Did you read the email that Steve sent about the shower issue?
I did, I was just reading it, just...
And I had it printed out, so it's in your stuff. If you didn't get it and read it before, then take the time now to read it, you know, because it has kind of all of the... Okay, and Commissioner, or Commissioner, Executive Director McCaslin went in and they tested the showers today. I'm trying to figure out what this means.
Must be seconds, I suppose, huh?
Is it, as of 1300, these are the lengths of the showers in seconds?
Okay.
And so, how many, how many showers are there in the ladies' shower? There are nine, oh.
There are nine, there's one handicap.
Cool. Oh, they're, okay, okay. So they said basically, so the showers in the ladies' one, the women's showers, one goes six seconds, one goes three, one goes zero, one that's all together, that's right, they're in that group of three, is completely broken, and then, so, you know, they tested it, he knew it. He called me last week and told me there was issue, and I was kind of shocked that we had replaced some parts in May, and they're already not functioning correctly. Because they are in fact, the parts mean you can set them for five, seven, or 10 seconds. And we've set them for 10, and they're not, they're either broken, and we paid $225 for a part that is no longer functioning, and that to me is, and it's not even six months old. It's like, that's just ridiculous.
And a thing that I wonder, I know we've been here several times, it seems like to me that most people aren't born in a barn. Seems like most people are going to turn the shower off. I wonder if we're not cheaper to switch some, maybe a couple of those over?
Okay, you, those of us who are adults, yes, we would, we would turn them off. There's a bunch of kids that use it, they do not, no. And look at how much money we spend on the hot water.
It's a lot.
So, but, but, this is, I'm kind of in agreement on having, living in showers, but I would, I, when I was coming here fairly frequently, I would go find the one that worked the longest, the 20 or 30-second shower, I agree with you ladies. And it's like, that's much more, but I also, you know, and I know, I don't think any of you are former Navy. Yeah, and the ones that are not working, absolutely, that is...
I was just pointing to, the men have some that go 27 and 14, so why would we be limited to 10 if that, if 10 is on?
Well, they have, no, they have exactly the same kind of equipment, and it just is the, you know, it was the luck of the draw, or the bad luck of the draw, unfortunately.
The story is standard native shower, 30-second wet down, cut the water off, soak down, and 30-second rinse off. Now here we are, stateside in the United States, and what are we getting?
Six.
Something's wrong, or something...
No, it is, it is, it is absolutely wrong, and, but I would, I would say to you that it's like, we do have to, just like the city of Oak Harbor, we don't have a well, we get our water from the city, and it's expensive. Anyone who lives within the city knows the water's expensive. They have to bus it over, or whatever they do with it, from Anacortes.
It's a long pipe.
And then, yeah, exactly, and it has to get heated, and that, we are poor, we are so poor. So I absolutely believe in limiting the showers. I don't want to limit it to two seconds, that's ridiculous, and that is actually bad parts. So what I wanted the board to talk about tonight was that whole, you know, because I'm not necessarily right, I'm just, I've been on a Navy boat, so I know what it is, you have, you, I don't think you have, but it's, but do we as a board agree with limiting, you know, the shower times? Or do we want to make it so that anyone could just leave it on? And I, because of...
I think it should be limited, I do, but...
Okay.
$250 a part, times, you know, 18 showers, and they keep breaking, it's like, oh my God, it's like, that's a lot of water.
We have, we have got, that has got to be changed.
It's like, that's a lot of water.
That has, that has got to be changed, that, you know, that obviously, we don't have the right parts, or something.
Exactly, something's up.
Yeah.
What do you also look at, like, there were descriptions, like, they get frustrated, and they pound those things right there.
Yeah.
Or they're not even paying attention, and they pound those, because I mean, you know how people are, they just, they really don't take care of what they have, and it breaks, and then it goes from there. Now that we have to pay more money, this goes everywhere right here, so it's just like, when something gets broken, now we have to pay more money to get that fixed, and now you get all the complaints, and now we have to fix it, and now that behavior continues again, because now they're still pounding those buttons, and now they're breaking them again, that we have to replace some parts again. So it's...
If it's too limited, then you're hitting it so many times, that's just going to wear it out, I think, if you don't pound it.
Exactly, and so...
And I only saw a lot of the hittiness, only, and frustration...
The last few days.
The last, well, maybe the last month.
Okay, and that's, are the ones that, none of them are working, are they labeled, you know, doesn't work?
No, they're not labeled.
Okay, all right, we will...
And it keeps changing which one works, so you have to go around, you know, the...
But this has been going on for a year though. I mean, we've been complaining to Steve for a long time.
All right.
That this isn't a new thing, and if they were fixed in May, that's a surprise to me.
He, some of the heads, some of the head, because we got, we ordered, I think it was, four kits. Each kit costs $225, and we are poor.
I've been coming here for 16 years from Coopville, and these are the same showers.
I know.
Maybe that's what's wrong.
I'm wondering if we're getting our parts from the wrong place or something, but that's what we need to look at, I think.
Should be under warranty, by that, sure.
Exactly.
I mean, you know, is there some way, is it true that they are limited set on a timer?
Yes, but, but the timers are...
You know, is there some way, you know, you could have a bank that says these, because we used to know the two, the two showers that worked.
Yeah.
We all knew which one it was, and you would just take your turn, and everybody else, on the other ones that would only last, well, probably back then, 15 seconds, you know, you started your shower, and then you finished off rinsing off in the one after somebody vacated it. Even if, like, if we had a few, and that they were labeled, long, or something, that says, this one will stay on for 30 seconds, you know, this showerhead works, the other one's don't. They don't get them pounded on so bad.
Yeah.
I wonder, I wonder if it would have behooved us to request that the director bring in, you know, three different plumbing and mechanical companies, and get some quotes from them, of, you know...
Okay, so we've been talking and talking, do we, is there, does somebody want to make a motion for what we, what we wish to, or do we just want to have a, we kind of agree with, you know, having some kind of a limit, and, and I think it can be, absolutely be longer than 10 seconds. But I, you know, and, and in fact, Steve said, he doesn't, he's not opposed to that, it's just what we had, and...
The high school has metered shower nuzzles, and I replaced them, there's a cartridge that fits in there, which is adjustable, and you can, you know, when you put a new one in, and I don't think it's the same brand, it is, I think a Kramer's?
Uh-huh.
But anyway, looking at different distributors, it's probably, there's a big difference in prices.
Do we, do we want to recommend that we start looking at, doing something different? Because I don't think these are serving our needs, quite frankly.
No, they're not, no.
Do we want to make that a suggestion? Do we want to make that a, you know, it's a, if the board says this, or it's an, you know, we kind of are in agreement, we need to do something different?
I mean, on a good month, you know, a lot of us board members are here two hours a month if we're not swimming, you know, it definitely needs dealt with, you know, I don't know if we want to say how it needs dealt with, you know, but it needs to dealt with quickly.
We will, we will talk to the director, and we will recommend that something, something different needs to happen. This is not meeting the needs of our valued consumers.
The thing about water, you have to come to...
He loves you too, he just, he can't see the forest for the trees sometimes, I think, is the problem. Anyway, I'm sorry, sir.
Oak Harbor water comes through the scadic river system, and that, I know for a fact, is a pH level of 7, which is neutral, so you don't have mineral buildup, it's not alkaline, this is a good one. Things last a lot longer.
I do think we should, you know, do our best to get it to 30 seconds, you know, as, as we replace them, you know, if that's possible.
I'm kind of, 30 seconds seems long, because we're paying to heat the water, that's, and I would take 20 seconds.
Yeah. Longer, how's that longer?
But definitely longer than three, and definitely working.
Now, I do have a question on those push buttons, they're just supposed to actually be 10 seconds, right?
Yes.
Instead of having those, why don't we have the, like, the Navy has, they, you actually have to push the button...
For it to work.
...to work, and you have to actually hold it to work, vice to actually push the button.
How do you do that when you turn your back? It's hard to hold it, when you're washing your hair, or you're trying to hit the soap off your back, holding the button.
I mean, you're sitting there, going like this to the button, trying to get your back, you know.
Well, that, I mean, some of the showers are like right above your head, though, and sometimes you get...
You do that, though, that you tie something around and get it running for a while, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sure people have come up with that.
Or the showerheads, those, um, those removable ones, those handheld ones, you can just, uh, use that.
Then that's another maintenance issue for the-
Okay, so an action item for the executive director, um, he need to look at-
And it sounded, it sounded like 10 more parts were on order, or something like that, in the email as well.
I don't know that he ordered 10 more, he ordered what he could, because there's four.
He told us four.
He ordered four, two were supposed, that's it, two were supposed to get here on Friday, and two were backordered, and I, and he doesn't, I don't remember if he actually got the two on Friday, they were delayed by UPS or whatever, but, um, so we need to look at possibly changing the showerheads.
Two are backordered, and they got two on the seconds.
Does each one serve the three, the bank of three?
It does, and it came out, because-
He's got, yeah.
But if those are the same free, sorry, same showerheads that we've had for, since 1983, I would say it's time to change those out.
I would think so, too.
But, um, so, change the showerhead, possibly changing the showerheads might be the right answer, as well as extending the, um, water time.
See, right now, we don't have a need for showers, because boom, shut down.
Well, just for, it should be back open tomorrow, I thought, is-
Tomorrow morning.
Yeah, Matt's doing the, he's changing, he's here, running around, so he's changing out the, whatever it is, the part. Okay. All right, um, so, commissioners, any other comments on the showerheads? I read that the action item to the ED need to look at possibly changing the showerheads and extending the water time, timers.
Yeah, I think that's a good, um-
Can I just say that we really appreciate you addressing this, because we were told that it wouldn't matter if we came and talked to you, that you would do anything about it anyway, and we decided to come anyhow, because we thought that we would be a little more considerate than what we were told would be.
No, 10, 10 seconds a shower was kind of like, eh, but then, he said, none of them are working, or, you know, very few of them are working, and the $225 that we expended back in May, for a part, just no longer functioning, to me is, that's criminal, so, I don't, I don't want to throw money away on something that's not working.
And I, I wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to bore anybody to death, but if anybody cared to look back over some of the YouTube videos of the board meetings over the last six months or year-
You mean the recordings, they're not videos.
The, or the, the recordings, yes. It has, the, the maintenance has been a point of contention quite often.
The showers, you mean?
Everything. So I don't, I don't want, I don't want to say that anybody, I don't want to say we've been close to fist to cuffs or nothing, but there's been some discussions, and I, I think we feel like things are improving, but I think there's a long ways to go as well, so just know that we're, we're gonna continue pushing ahead on, you know, trying to maintain an essential facility within the community, but the budget is very tight as well, so-
Yeah, well, we understand that, we just want, we just want to be listened to, we don't want to be talking to somebody that's totally gassed off, whatever we have to say, that doesn't work for us anymore.
Do you get the suggestions, do you guys get this, you know, we, right, as, we've been running-
I've never seen nothing.
Oh, we're great, you know, a lot of them.
No, he, Steve will mention those things to us, and so, honestly, you can also, if there's something, if you feel like you're not getting listened to, you can send emails to all of us, and where our emails are listed, so we're-
I thought those papers were supposed to go straight to the board.
What?
That's probably the best, that's probably the best way to communicate, though, if you have something to say.
No, because it goes directly to the executive director, and then he chooses what to tell us, but, but if you really feel like you're not being listened to, just go directly to the commissioners.
And emails, probably.
We're listening, we're all working it back.
Yeah, but usually, and, and we're not functioning correctly, and if we had the two other commissioners here, we probably wouldn't, because it would be kind of a free-for-all, and it'd be too confusing, but, um, I feel your pain, ladies, I feel your coldness in not getting a hot shower.
E, e, an email, you know, and writing, you know, which is part of public record, is, is probably the best way to go, usually, and you can see, see all of the board members as well, you know, and, i- i- if you're, if you want to make sure that we're hearing you, that's probably the best way.
Well, the best way is go to the executive director, but, but then if you feel like you're not, when you feel like you're not being heard, then come, you can just emailing us is, is the best way to then be heard.
It's better than coming here, face to face.
Um, like I said, if, if-
If you have the time, we'll-
There wasn't four of, five of you with this discussion, we, and if I had five people here, and him here, we wouldn't be having a back and forth discussion like this, we just don't have time. So, but we don't have a ton of stuff on the agenda, and I think this was important to hear you.
We appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, so we are now gonna move on.
So we should get out of here.
You may, you, you can stay and listen to all the really boring stuff if you want to.
It's so exciting, but-
That was very informative.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to voucher review, do I have a motion on the vouchers?
I kind of looked over them, nothing looked out of place to me, you didn't see nothing that looked wrong?
I need a, I need a motion.
A motion that we approve all, uh, the vouchers?
Okay, you have to say it.
I did not say we approve-
All right, it's been, do I have a second?
Um, was that enough, or?
I'll, I'll put, I'll treat it up.
Okay, yes, I seconded it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, then we approve expense vouchers, 7370 through 7397, in the amount of $28,742.45, and a payroll in the amount of $39,592.57. Any discussion?
I didn't have none.
I did not see anything either. Did you notice that somebody stole one of our credit cards and used it to buy pizza and stuff?
My company card, but, but I'm with US Bank where I work, it's been stolen three times by just random, they don't even get the number, it's just 99999, and it was a pick and pull in Wisconsin one time for like 10 grand.
Oh my god.
So, we didn't know nothing about it, we got a call from the bank and the Waukesha County, Wisconsin prosecutor, it's like, holy moly.
Well, anyway, it all got, they, they caught it, and it got covered, so, all right.
That's why debit cards are so scary.
So it was moved and seconded to transfer the money into our account, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I, the chair also votes aye, unanimously approved. All right, committee report, Clover Valley?
We didn't meet.
Program Review Committee met, and we have nothing to report, we're continuing to, um, look at various things. Levy Committee, oh, I'm on the Levy Committee, um, I don't know if we, if we met, or if we did meet, we didn't do anything, so I have nothing to report from the Levy Committee.
Did you want to meet in January or the Clover Valley?
Yeah, I mean, if that works for Cas, yeah.
Okay, well, deal with Cas, and I'll deal with Eric, uh-
Yeah, if, if it works for Cas and Eric, yeah.
Because he is, uh, gonna be moving here in March, his, uh, wife got orders from here, uh, San Diego, so, um, try to find some more people to, uh, help maintain, like, Eric and Adam, and then that's why.
Okay, moving on to action item review. Let me just, we still have outstanding, several of the minutes that we talked about already, relook at what the kayak equipment needs to be replaced, that was, remember, we had, that was in the, um, there was a certain amount of money that was in the budget, and he wanted to replace kayak equipment, that's still in the work. Schedule, oh, we're gonna-
Did we move that down to another line item? I thought we moved that down because there was nothing in the kayak, and we moved that down, and we replaced that with something else, I remember that.
I didn't think that got moved down, I thought it was just left in there, because, I, or we, we actually may have deleted it, or said, we probably need to delete this, or-
We went, I think it went down to zero, and then that money was put somewhere else.
Yes, we did that, but we said, we need to tell us if you need, if this stuff is dangerous, but if it's not dangerous, then we're not replacing it right now, I think is what we said. But that was, he was still supposed to talk to him. We are gonna schedule commissioner training for 2017, that's in the work, review EAS offering, EAS offering, I don't know what that is, EAS offering at the April 2017 regular meeting, EAS, I don't remember what that is, it's scheduled, anyway.
And those people do the payroll, maybe?
Um, EAS offering, I don't know what that is, can't remember. Pool employees on interest and being afforded the E-
Oh!
That was the-
That was the, the advisor, yeah, 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 employee advisory service capability. So, um, we're gonna talk about it in April, they're polling the employees, whether they're interested, so, um-
Is that like $10,000 thing, or something like that?
No, it was, no, it wasn't $10,000.
It's like watching their employers, like, psych, psychological type of-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it's not $10,000, but it's, it was for 15 employees, it was gonna be 600 bucks, or something like that, I think, it wasn't, it wasn't-
Not much, but it was-
It wasn't 10,000, but it was still kind of a significant amount of money, for, for the fact that we've not used it, really, that's the point. Um, okay, question back from the 22 November, have we advertised our closures? And the answer is yes, via website, flyers, Facebook, MWR. Then it's, instead of roof replacement, so I guess we're talking about doing the filling, and that's blank, we, there's no update on that, I saw. Question, what is our family swim attendance limited to? And it is limited to five members.
Good.
Um, if not closing the pool for cleaning in August 2017, will we charge Nwak Masters members for August? Currently, Nwak Masters only charge for 11 months, because previously closed for a weekend August, so not charged for August, that was the rationale when implemented. Comment, neither the Masters nor Nwak swim at all in August, unless they do so on their own, the only exception to this would be if any of the Nwak swimmers qualified for zones, and that would only be the first week, and would be charged for that week as a prorated monthly fee. In the past, the pool was only closed in August as the norm, because the Nwak Masters were idle, he said, instead of IDLE, IDOL, were idle during that month. Beginning in September 2016, Nwak swimmers no longer get to swim for free outside of practice times. Okay, so that's the answer for that, and then a bunch of meeting minutes. All right, um, and also, because he's not here, if you have questions for him that come up, we'll just write them down, and he can then send us an email to answer our questions. So any questions on any of the action items?
Nope.
All right, unfinished business, the line of credit update, all right, we have, you guys agreed to it when I was gone, that what we're gonna, he's gonna go and look at it. So I have a resolution that needs to be signed, that you agreed to last week, um, that allows, shows the intent is for him to apply for a loan, and he will get the terms, then he brings it, the terms back to the board, so signing this does not mean he's gonna go get a loan, it means he's gonna find out what the terms are.
Looking into this, basically.
Yes, so, we signed this.
That was during the special meeting that you guys had, right?
Yes. Oh, did you not make that one?
I did not make that one.
It got awkward, you could have probably helped with them pass.
Well, I didn't-
There, there were so few of us here, that it got awkward for a minute.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on the line of credit update?
No.
Okay.
Other than, other than as somebody that was here, that's the way I interpreted it as well, so.
Yes, good. Um, and then, the Halloween Invitational P and L, did you see that? And accordingly, according to the thing, we made almost $6,000 on it, um, as a net, and then my question to him when we talked about it was, what was our opportunity cost? And I don't imagine, over a weekend, how much can we make if it's just normal swimming? So what did we lose in normal stuff by having, and I know, we don't make $6,000 over a weekend, it may have been, he said he thought it might be a couple thousand, maybe, but he's gonna do, he's gonna take the two other weekends in, in, um, October and, um, average, and then he'll tell us that, and that'll show us a, no crap, you get, this is how much you can make from having an invitational swimming, it's like, cool. All right, any questions about the Halloween Invitational swimming, which was held over Saturday and Sunday, so, it's two days. Okay, the 2017 budget overtime rule, all right, we talked about this, and the reason I wanted to talk about it is, we based budget decisions on that overtime rule, I did, I know, um, and we, we agreed to increase two wages on the new overtime rule. I cannot read the writing, oh, but it was an executive fiat from the Labor Department that basically raised the salary cap below which employees must receive overtime, so therefore, we had to raise the salaries so that those two employees would not, um, we wouldn't have to pay them overtime, because they did work extra, and we didn't want to pay them overtime, we'd rather pay them more money. So then, in November, a federal judge issued a nationwide injunction against that overtime rule, the next step is that it will get appealed, the judge is from the conservative Fifth Circuit in Texas, so may not win an appeal, and Forbes Magazine, or reporting, or whatever they are, said, quote, "Given Donald Trump's victory and the Republican takeover of both Houses of Congress, it is unlikely the Labor Department will be able to revive this rule." So, I just wanted to make sure, based on that, do we want to revisit those two wage increases, or do we want to just leave it as is?
I know, for, for me personally, um, the increase in the swim coaches wasn't, wasn't, was it $700 or something?
It wasn't very much, it was, it seems like it was-
$400, $700?
I think it was less than a thousand.
Uh, and in my opinion, you know, with Matt, you know, with the maintenance supervisor, you know, we've looked at what, um, what is made by other maintenance leads, like in Anacortes and stuff, so, so there was a lot more, my, my decision was based on, um, and given, given that they've already been showed the budget and told, I, I don't feel that I could revisit it, I mean, if other people wanted to have that conversation, I'd be part of it, but-
And the executive director does not want to have that conversation, and I, I realize that that is, you know, here's your budget, no, that it, that it, but on the other hand, we did it for a certain reason, it's less, again, we're poor, we are so poor.
And it, it's one of the few things I don't like about a constitution of a republic, it's the tug of war both directions every eight years, it's like, oh, it's like, really?
Yes, so, Mr. Rush, anything?
Uh, to be truthful, I'm not a money expert on anything about pay or anything like that, so, I'm not too-
And then he just hands you a check, and you-
Paying my paycheck, here we go.
Okay, so you don't have a-
I don't have anything right there, and-
I, I just, if nobody has an issue, then we're just gonna leave it as is, I don't-
There, there might, there might be one motion that maybe the board should make, and, you know, with, like I said, with one of them, it was a moderate pay raise, with the other one, it was pretty drastic, it was pretty gracious, and it was because of the rule as well, and you know what, maybe it's time for a board resolution that says, hey, you know, any col, don't, you know, any colas or, um, any colas or performance raises you expected to get over the next five years, those might be on timeout at this point, you know, and maybe that's something worth talking about.
I don't think, I don't think that we need a resolution to that, it's, just keep that in mind, you know, when that comes up, it's like, you know, we just did it a couple years ago, for something that didn't even come to, you know, so it's like, I would say, that is, that is kind of-
Yeah.
-done, and I don't, I don't think we need a resolution, or a motion, or, in my opinion.
Yes.
But, are you okay with that?
I'm, I'm perfect with that, yes, I'm perfect with that.
All right, we, we, I just wanted to bring it up, I wanted to make sure everybody understood what had happened, because I read it while I was on leave, and it was like, ah, man.
And, no, me too, I'm like, really?
Exactly, okay, um-
And it was without reading the Forbes article, it was with knowing that, you know, hey, the, um, the solicitor general is either not gonna argue the case, or do a very lame job arguing it on purpose, so, and there you are.
Yeah, okay, 2017 budget, healthcare, um, all right, we budgeted in 2017, $14,900, which was the 10% increase, or whatever percent increase we had done, and they got our, we got our figures on what the healthcare's gonna cost us for this next year, for the, you know, two whole people, and we need another $1,200, which, we still had that in the budget squish, we didn't have a lot, but we still had it. The insurance adjuster said that, basically, health budgets increase about 12%, 1% a month, so about 12%, so, um, that's what we need to figure for 2018, however, the executive However, the executive director said that he's going to recommend for 2018 that we do maybe an 80/20 where the employee pays 80%.
Versus 90/10?
Yeah, we're currently at 90/10, and leave the spouse, kids at 50/50.
And given that, given that the employees that receive medical are also those that received raises, I feel that that's very fair.
Absolutely. But that's going to come up not until 2018. But anyway, he just wanted to make sure that we knew that, that's what the, we're in a, already getting...
Awesome.
We were close, but not quite close enough with that. All right, any questions on the budget?
For the director.
Moving on to new business, we already discussed the locker room showers. Okay, here's a question. I wanted to do the election of board officers for 2017 because I'm not the chairman as of the 1st of January. So with only three of us, do we want to elect the board? Do we want to go ahead and just extend me as the chairman through to the January meeting?
Nobody's going to fight us on that. I just think we should vote for you for the whole year and address everybody else at the next meeting. That's what I think. They're going to agree. You're doing a very good job. But if you're more comfortable with one month and everybody else is here, that's fine too.
I said we wait till we get a full board.
I agree, because it's such a...
It's going to be unanimous regardless.
Okay, do I, can I?
Unless you don't want to do the job, then...
I'm fine doing it, it's not that bad. So do I have a motion for, for something to do with the chairmanship for the first three weeks in January?
I motion that we, that we nominate Commissioner Holly as the board chair for the first three weeks of January.
Or how about to extend my chairmanship for three weeks? Does that work?
Let's extend it for three weeks, yes.
Okay, so it's been moved that the chairmanship be extended for the first three weeks of January till the meeting for Commissioner Holly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I approve as well. Chairmanship to the meeting in January. Okay, we also, I wanted to talk about the calendar. What we'll do is we'll set the January meeting date, and then in January, we'll set the rest of the year in case anyone else has an issue. I already know that I want to move the May meeting a week early so that I can do my transit east for...
Is this for the whole year?
Just for January.
This is January.
These are the, so your calendar, see this, this calendar. These are the meetings that are, it's when the executive director would like to have them. And he always, he picks the fourth Thursday of the meeting for, or the month for a lot of reasons, and there are good reasons. But I already know I'm going to want the May meeting to be the 18th. And he did move them already. He moved the November meeting to the 20th. It's, you know, because...
Remember the May meeting? You said it was in May, right?
Yeah, May, I'll move it to the 18th, just a week earlier. We used to meet on the third Thursday of the month, and it's, it's easier for them to get all the paper, the work to us if it's the fourth Thursday.
And that has to do with the, you read or something? Or that's just like...
It's just, it's when we get paperwork from the county, or the... Okay, so is January 26th a good, do we agree that January 26th should be our meeting date, the first meeting in 2017?
That's not the one you needed to move out?
No, mine is not till May. So, and I would say we'll, if we agree on 26th January, that will, can I have a motion for the meeting in January?
Yeah, I motion that we set our regular board meeting for January of 2017, 2017 on the 26th of January.
And do we want to continue at 6:30, same time?
Yeah, it works.
January 26th at 6:30 PM. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, set the first regular meeting for 2017 to January 26th at 6:30 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair also agrees unanimously approved.
I wonder if the three months in the dead of summer, if we would have been better off to push it back a little bit?
Back.
I just wondered that, time-wise, just, I know it's hard, it seems harder for people to get here in the summer with sports and kids and all that.
You know what, as we can talk about that, I don't want to...
I've always wondered, yeah, I don't know.
You have kids, so those of you, you're, do you have kids?
No.
You're the only one with kids, so if you think so, just say so. And I, everyone would probably be happy to accommodate. All right.
You said that was for December 1, right? Or...
What? No, it's January, the January meeting. We set the January meeting, and so in January, we'll set the rest of the year.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, moving on, the new minimum wage impact, we are going to postpone to January because that was something that Steve didn't have time to get into, stuff, and it's something he wanted. Did everyone have a chance to read the staff reports?
Read through most of them. I didn't see nothing that really jumped out.
I didn't either.
Glad to get the MWR thing finally worked out.
Let's finalize now?
Did, yeah, he said...
It's still in lap...
The MWR contract is in place. The only change is that the morning lapse room price is now 425.
Awesome, cool, good deal.
And that was exactly the right thing to do. Did you look at the emergency action plan? Does anyone have an issue with tying our emergency actions to the school district? He was thinking about doing it with the city, but he said he had a hard time finding out when the city did anything. So the school district is easy, because it's, you know, everyone...
And it's right next to us, that's the problem.
Exactly. Okay, so I think that was, all right, if nobody has anything else, I'm going to go ahead and read into the record the employee of the month. The employee of the month for November 2016 is Ms. Jessica Livin. Jessica has taken over the aquatics department and has brought a renewed sense of purpose and unbridled energy to her programs. She has worked tirelessly to review all of the district's aquatic programs and has made many changes that have increased their value to our patrons, from whom she has received much praise. Jessica has also brought a more rigorous approach to her staff's training, which has kept them at a higher level of proficiency with critical lifesaving skills. She also restructured the process for scheduling the lifeguards, swim school instructors, and aerobic instructors, which will still provide the level of safety service our patrons have come to expect and will benefit the district by lowering the associated costs. Jessica's energy and enthusiasm are infectious to both patrons and staff alike. Thank you, Jessica, for all your hard work. We really appreciate your efforts. Next, staff reports. Final board comments. Mr. Hoffmeyer.
I was really glad to see so many people turn up for public comment and to participate in the meeting. That was, that was really neat. The other thing I noticed in the paper, and it is, it's something that's been up several times, property that goes from the fire station here to the senior center. I think there's a couple modular buildings that daybreak or somebody used for a while. You know, there's a little, old little house right there that the Opportunity Council uses for some emergency shelter. But I see that the Big Brothers, Big Sisters is trying to, you know, get the funds allocated, $4 million or something, to build a facility that goes over there to replace the roller barn. So I think it would be, I think it would be rather intelligent if our director kind of, you know, tracks that stuff closely and maybe participates in that if those other groups will allow, just because, you know, that there is a property line there, and who knows, maybe there's something that ends up working good for both of us. Who knows, you know, it could be something that works out for everybody, and just keep an eye on it, I guess. But having, having 400 kids a day right there may, may be something that is very beneficial to the pool.
So do you want to make that an action item to the ED?
Yeah, if that's something he could follow up on.
To keep track, keep track, follow up.
Yeah, maybe, maybe meet with the executive director of the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and, you know...
They're trying to replace a roller barn?
It's not, they've, they've grown out of it. It's, they need a bigger space, a bigger and better space. They, it's so old and probably in storage or something, they can't, they can't modify it enough to suit their purposes.
And I know it's, they've met enough on it to where they've met with our state representative or one of them, state senator, something like that, and, you know, they're asking Olympia for a million dollars to get the ball rolling on a $4 million project, so.
Isn't it, it's like something, Boys and Girls? It's not, it's not, you said it.
Boys and Girls?
It's a Boys and Girls Club, that's it, Boys and Girls Club.
I was thinking of Big Brother, Big Sister, but it's Boys and Girls Club, yes.
Boys and Girls Club. Okay. Boys and Girls Club. Okay, so action item to the executive director, keep track of, follow up on the movement of the Boys and Girls Club.
Yeah.
To our neighborhood.
You know, but with an eye on potential growth here within the pool as well, we all of a sudden lose the opportunity to grow that direction. And with the city owning that property, that was always a thought of, of a potential way we could go.
I thought we actually did own...
The city owns, I don't know how close to the window, but from the fire station to the senior center.
I thought, I, I thought we actually owned that, but now, now you're...
What was always thought that the city would let us use it, and it's kind of first come, first served. Whoever puts it to good use gets it.
Yeah, that's kind of sad.
So all of a sudden, we're stuck.
Because we're so screwed over, we...
But maybe, maybe there's something where like, hey, you know, we can come a little this way if you let us go a little that way, and I just thought it might be good for him to participate with it.
I totally missed where they said they were, and they said in the city, and I don't...
And the only reason I know is, you know, we've performed some very, very, very minor work on the Shelter Campaign to the Council, and I know they've been sent a letter by the city three times now, saying, hey, your house has been tore down because we're going to give it away, and it's fell through every time.